To the March 4th regular Town Council meeting, we'll start with the Pledge of Allegiance. Roll call, please.
Chairperson Phillips.
Present.
Counselor Sims.
Present.
Counselor Willis.
Present.
Counselor Kush.
Present.
Cogannon.
Present.
Counselor Lavoy.
Present.
And Counselor Segal.
Present.
All right, we'll move on to the acceptance of the February 4th regular Town Council Meeting Minutes and the February 4th Special Town Council Meeting Minutes. Is there a motion?
So moved.
Is there a second?
Second.
Second by Counselor Willis. Any changes? Discussion? All right, all those in favor? Seven yays. All right, this is the time for open public communications. This is for items not on the agenda. If you have something you'd like to talk about, please come up to the podium, state your name.
Are we on?
Yep, go ahead.
Ken Curtis, 118 South Street, 53-year taxpayer, probably paying taxes for more than some of you guys' age, so I'd like to put that in. Last time I tried to speak as succinct as I could, but I went too long, so I'm going to try to do it a little faster this time. Basically, a review of what I tried to get through the last meeting. I have concerns about the different departments in town. Are they all able to get the same resources and increase the needs of fire, rescue, police, Public Works? I know that Chief Fickett and Chief Sandburn have issues hiring qualified candidates now. I can't imagine what it'll be like if we keep adding more and more streets and houses in the town. Having the development of at least 1,200 units at this time, and maybe my count is probably low, that there's going to be a big increase in trying to cover their streets and maintenance and snowplow. I was told that there's 152 miles of streets and roads in Gorham as it is. How many more miles will be added to this care? Five miles of sidewalks to plow. So, increase, and one of the questions I had, will the increase in water needs for all these new developments, will they reach a limit? And also with sewage, will they reach a limit where the capacity will be more than what they can handle? Does that mean that Gorham has to have a processing plant somewhere here? From talking about schools and the increase in taxes, if you've been aware that Barney Eagle is now trying to put a new high school together, and they're estimating at this point $400 million. If we start going into Gorham building a new school, I can't imagine what it'll cost at that point. Now, I know you guys have a difficult job, but one of the things that you need to go back and revisit is you made promises to the town when you had, when you were running, you had meetings, you met the taxpayers, and you made some promises. I'd like to have you go back and review what you said yourself. I'm sure you've got your notes. If you don't believe that developers are going to clear-cut property in town, go down on the corner on Roby Street, and now I can see all the way up the backside of Bramhall, beautiful big tree right there on the corner. I last counted 87 years, probably close to a 100-year tree. They will take the, it's easy for them to build if they've clear-cut. I guess I covered everything. Thank you.
Hello, everyone. My name is Camille Seo, and I live on Queen Street in Gorham. I would like to express my sincere thank you to the town councilors for taking the time to carefully consider the implications that the recently proposed Shaw Brothers Quarry expansion would have had on the residents of Gorham. I'm very appreciative of all the time you have dedicated to listening to all of our concerns, and I know there are a lot, so thank you. Throughout this process, we heard from numerous residents sharing how quarry operations have impacted our lives and the concerns we have about ongoing operations from a health perspective. We also heard from quarry operators about the ways that they have contributed to the community. It's clear that the decisions made to not approve the quarry expansion was one that weighed heavily on all of your minds, considering the amount of debate around the issue and engagement by residents and quarry representatives, so thank you for taking our concerns seriously. In recent Town Council meetings, I heard several comments about the need for ongoing conversations between all parties to continue to ensure the health and well-being of residents is being maintained while quarries and gravel pits continue to be a presence in our town. I'm looking forward to continued collaboration with town officials and quarry and gravel pit representatives to further our work by collecting important data to ensure that all quarries and gravel pits in Gorham are following town ordinances and statewide regulations around health and safety in their operations. Thank you all.
Anyone else from the public? All right. Yep, go ahead.
Hi, my name's Matthew Poria. I live on Malon Ave. I'm about 600 yards from the driving range there by the course, and I've lived there for 28 years. And I figured, you know, trips, you know, going back and forth each, you know, day to work and so forth, I've done that trip probably about 15,000 times. So, I was kind of thinking about, gee, you know, I just wanted to talk about a couple of things very, very quickly, by the way. One being experiential, the other one being just, you know, numbers.
Sir, we're actually going to be talking about the golf course contract zone later, so, and there's a public hearing, so, yep, so if you want to come up during that, yep, that would be fine.
Is it this, this same day, or?
Yep, yep, no, it's going to be, it's going to be in a couple items on the agenda.
Okay, thank you.
Yep, yep, thank you. Anyone else? All right, we'll move on to counselor communications, and I will start on my right with Counselor Segal. Go ahead.
Thank you very much. I would just like to make a public service announcement for the toddler storytimes and newborn storytimes at the Baxter Library. It's a lovely little event, and parents and their newborns and toddlers come from a whole bunch of neighboring towns in Gorham to enjoy it. It is on, boy, 9:30 and 10:00. Sorry about that. It is on Wednesdays at 9:30 is the newborn time, and I believe Thursday's at 10:00 is the toddler time. It's great, especially if you have a newborn or toddler. That's all for me. Thank you.
Thank you. Counselor Sims?
Nothing today, thanks.
Thank you. Counselor Lavoy?
Yep, not much, just the Finance Committee's next meeting is actually scheduled for tomorrow at 3:00 PM in Conference Room A. And I did run into former Counselor Lee Pratt, had a good conversation with him, and just to remind everybody, give blood.
All right. Counselor Willis, go ahead.
Just had a chance to attend the Merida Conference last week with some members from town staff, the Gorham Economic Development Corporation, and a number of local Gorham businesses were also there. For anybody interested in watching that, it was a great conference, some really interesting breakout sessions, and those will be available online in the coming weeks. I'll share one thought that I wrote down that I think applies to our community as we move forward, and that is that the private sector invests in communities that invest in themselves. So, I think we really need to keep that in mind as we plan moving forward.
Thank you. Counselor Kush?
Yes, I'd just like to say that I know there are a lot of holidays and celebrations happening today, but I'm in what's left of half of my owl outfit for, I'll put in a plug for Read Across America. I was dressed up at my elementary school today as Hedwig the Owl delivering mail to Harry Potter. We'll be celebrating all week. Some of you may or may not be invited guests into the school buildings, but if you're not, please, if you're interested, give them a call and offer to come in. They love to have people come read with them. Thank you.
Thank you. Counselor Gagnon?
Thank you, Madam Chair. Just a reminder that daylight savings time is this Sunday, March 9. Reset your batteries and ensure that your fire, smoke, and carbon monoxide detectors are all working and tip-top shape. Thank you.
Thank you. I'm just going to mention that May and Maple Weekend is the 22nd and 23rd of this month, where we have a lot of sugar houses in Gorham, lots of areas with heavy traffic for the weekend. The police department will be out helping with traffic flow on some of the busier roads, so just keep an eye out for that, and visit as many sugar houses as you can in Gorham. And that's it. We'll move on to the Town Manager's Report.
Thank you, Madam Chair. I also ran into Counselor, former Counselor Lee Pratt, who reminded me also to mention donating blood, but it was, my thunder was stolen on that, so next month. Town staff and department heads are diving headfirst into our budget process this month with the anticipation that next month, the council should receive the, what is hopefully a fiscally sustainable and responsible municipal budget, and with an emphasis that we're going to try to open some doors, working with the school department to address our issues throughout the community, where, where it's appropriate on the town side and where we can. So, looking forward to working with them a little bit more. Reminder, road postings are in effect in Gorham. I didn't make that up, right, Terry? They are now. And we have various online surveys, particularly related to open space and trails right now, for the Town's Master Plan. That's available on our website. We also have links to GP COGS doing a regional trail analysis for more or less the PAX region, and looking to interconnect a lot of the trail networks. And lastly, I want to thank Public Works. I hope I'm not jinxing them, but thank them for their work this winter, and hopefully it's on the downhill side for them. So, thank you.
Thank you. All right, we'll move on to the School Committee Report, and Chair Perkins.
Good evening. Starting off with our kindergarten information nights, each of our three elementary schools will be hosting kindergarten information nights for parents on Thursday, March 6, starting at 5:30. If you're a parent of an incoming kindergartner in Gorham, please plan on attending and call the school to register. We also still have our accepting applications, rather, for our pre-K programs here in Gorham. Children must be four years of age by October 15th in order to apply. Applications are being accepted jointly by our public pre-K partners for the following programs: Narragansett Elementary School Program, Gorham Arts Alliance Program, Seedlings to Sunflowers Program. If you're interested in having your four-year-old enrolled for the 25-26 programs, call Narragansett to learn more. I also wanted to highlight an upcoming Eat and Learn event. The Gorham Schools Anti-Racism and Equity Committee will be hosting a family-friendly event focused on the topic of empathy on March 10 from 5:30 to 7:00 PM at the high school. The event is free, and the registration link can be found on the high school website in the event calendar. The Fiscal Sustainability Committee is coming down to its last few meetings. They've been working hard to finalize specific goals, recommendations, and success indicators. A final report will be delivered to the Town Council and the School Committee later this spring, and a thank you to everybody that's participated in those sessions. The last two meetings of that group are scheduled for March 10 at 6:00 PM and April 14 at the same time. Meetings are open to the public and are also livestreamed or archived on the Town's website. I believe those are in Conference Room A. The tennis courts, sorry, I keep hearing a squeaking noise. There's not like a mouse or something, is there? Okay. If there is, I will try not to scream directly into the microphone. Okay. A big thank you to the team at Gorham Public Works, Gorham Rec, and the Town Manager's Office for working with the schools to complete a temporary, to create a temporary solution for the high school tennis courts. Public Works will be completing the needed demolition work and resetting a base for the courts, after which a professional tennis court company will resurface the courts, add lines, paint as needed, and reset the nets. This work should allow us to use the courts for another three or four years while we consider the best long-term placement for them. A special thanks to Efrem, Tom, and Terry for your work moving this plan forward. Thank you. And wrapping up with an update on the FY26 budget, the School Committee began its Budget Workshop series yesterday. All budget meetings are open to the public, as well as being recorded and posted on both the town and school websites. Meetings start at 7:00 and are held in the upstairs conference room here at the Municipal Center. The upcoming dates are March 11, March 17, March 24, and March 31, followed by the School Committee's vote on the proposed FY26 budget at the April 9 regular meeting, and then subsequently submitting it to the Town Council. Efrem has, I believe, that schedule, and will be sharing it shortly. And as always, please feel free to reach out with any questions.
All right, any questions for Chair Perkins? Counselor Gagnon, go ahead.
Thank you. Chairperson Perkins, have you guys identified anything that would have federal or state sensitivity to funding and identified those, and are you going to be sharing that information with the council as well?
I'm sorry, could you clarify that question a little bit more for me? Are you talking beyond EPS funding and such, or?
As we have some federal funding sensitivities from the federal level and, which may impact the state and subsequently the local funding, have you identified any areas, whether it be existing grants or other things, that you could share with the council that would, that could be impacted by any volatility in that area?
We are very closely monitoring everything at the federal and state level. At this time, we don't have any specific information on anything that will impact us, but as we've seen, that can change from moment to moment. So, we will certainly continue to monitor that, and if we see anything forthcoming, we'll definitely alert the Town Council. I will say we saw a nice bump of about $700,000 in our proposed EPS funding this year, thanks to a dramatic increase in our free and reduced lunch form completion, so that's been helpful.
You for the good answer.
My pleasure.
Any other questions for Chair Perkins? All right, thank you very much.
Thank you.
Public hearing number one on item 2025-3-2. Public hearing to hear comments on proposal to issue a renewal massage license to Natalie Begley, administrator's sponsor.
Public hearing number one is now open. If anyone has any comments they'd like to make on this, seeing no one jumping up, the public hearing's closed.
Proposed Order 25-21, order the Town Council issue a renewal massage license to Natalie Begley.
Is there a motion?
So moved.
All right, by Counselor Kush, is there a second?
A second.
Second by Counselor Segal.
Counselor Chair?
Yes.
I would like to recuse myself from this item, seeing that I have a direct financial relationship with this business.
Thank you. All right. Any other comments, questions? Go ahead.
Madam Chair, everything is in order?
Yep.
For this client?
We've got all the documentation in front of us. Thank you. Any other comments, questions? All right, all those in favor? Six yays.
Public hearing number two on item 2025-3-3. Public hearing to hear comments on proposal to create a contract zone on 170-plus acres of the former Gorham Country Club to allow a limited number of single-family homes as part of her larger mixed-use residential commercial development on McClellan Road, zones South Gorham Crossroads, Lot 8, Lot 41, and Lot 7, Lot 6, Lot 7, and Lot 8, administrator's sponsor.
All right. Public hearing number two is now open, and this is the item on the golf course. Please, please come up.
This is my first Town meeting, so please excuse the phone.
No, that's totally fine.
I have no idea what I'm actually doing, but I'm going to be really, really brief. I, as I had said, you know, I'm right, really, really close to the golf course, and I've lived there for just over 28 years, you know, work in town, back and forth, back and forth, probably over 15,000 times. In fact, I'm a math guy, so I did the math on a whole bunch of stuff, but I'm not going to get, get, get into the details. But, the reason that I'm saying this is from an experiential standpoint. I live on Malon, I get on on Beatrice. There's lots and lots of cars that run, run, you know, through basically, you know, so that they don't have to go through the light. And getting off to take that left-hand turn from either Malon or Beatrice, you know, there's probably 100 feet between cars, you know, typically, so you kind of wait for the right moment and zoom, and you come out. And then when you get to the bottom of the hill, you know, where you take the right onto Brackett, there's, there's a big hill that's, you know, relatively close. It's probably 50, 60, 70 yards up to that hill. And what, what you have to do is, you have to time it, and you, you really need to focus very, very closely and watch. And when you don't see either the lights of a car coming up at nighttime, or like the front of the car, you take off like, you know, Richard Petty as quick as you can, because cars are going 50, 55, you know, 45. And to go from, it's probably from here to twice, you know, to that wall, I mean, you don't, you don't have time. You have a split second. So, you accelerate like crazy, you go up the road. You know, I can't tell you how many hundreds and hundreds of times, you know, cars have been like zoom, boom, and you're accelerating, you know, and someone's jamming their brakes on. It's a very, very dangerous pass. The reason that I say the experiential part of it is, is that, you know, you're going to build 1,000, 1,000 units or, or so at the golf course. Those thousand homeowners have probably 1,500 cars, you know, or maybe more, maybe, maybe less, you know, whatever. So, that par five there, which is right from the Hawks House back, back to the hill, it's about 450 yards. So, at the bottom of that hill to there, maybe it's 400 and change or whatever. The average car is like 15 feet long. People leave like a five-foot buffer on both sides, so you've got about 25 feet. So, you do the quick math on that. That's, you know, 58 cars, right? So, that's the usual rank and file now. You know, you get out, you know, it's difficult sometimes, you know, you have to wait a minute or so, you know, to actually get off the road in Brackett. So, you put 1,500 cars in there. What does that, you know, what does that mean? You go from something that's, A, you know, dangerous, it's a pain in the neck. Like I said, I've been doing it for 28 years, so I know it, I know it very, very well. You put 1,500 cars on that, you know, some proportion, of course, go right and some go left. Most people work in Westbrook, South Portland, Portland, Bedford, you know, whatever. So, let's say 70% of, you know, 1,500 cars, that's a heck of a lot of cars in there. I think that Jim Means sent, sent you guys a note, he's my next, my next-door neighbor, about like a bottom, you know, like a lot of the different things, and I'm just going to talk traffic, but I'd rather talk about 17 other things about it. But, I mean, you know, think about really, you know, you'll hear people talking about the environment, sewers, whatever, what's going to happen to our wells, what about our taxes, what about high school, what about 15,000 other things that, you know, people are thinking about. But you, you put another 1,500 cars in that, in that, in that zone, that can really hold about, you know, 58 cars from the Hawks House, it's right up to the base of that hill. You've got a lot of people looking at it, saying, I can't get out of here, right? So, they're either going right to try to get onto 114. That's, that's like a huge treat there, as, as you folks know. And it's, it's, you know, not just a pill to get through, it's a snarl that you just can't get out of. I mean, it just can't happen functionally. You know, maybe, maybe you say, okay, we're going to knock down the hill, there's going to be a bypass, there'll be something else, you know, maybe we'll revise the, you know, whatever the heck it was that was going through town and so forth.
So, I forgot to mention just that we have a time limit, because there's other people who probably want to speak, so just, my apologies for not mentioning it at the beginning.
Oh, no, 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 fine, I'm wrapped up. It's just, you know, traffic
Yep.
is really something you've got to think about carefully, because it's going to be bad, real bad. So.
You. Anyone else?
Since he's my neighbor, I'm Paula Marshand, and I live at the other end of Malon.
All right, we're, we're going to give everybody four minutes, so we have a timer, so just, just so you know. Okay.
I've just, I do agree with the traffic. I do a lot of walking, and I've been clipped by cars. I do drive the speed limit, and I get trucks that try to push me off the road. It is, it is dangerous. It's highly dangerous. But, the other thing is, I just, in, in much of my, I've been here 28 years as well, and I volunteered in the schools, and I volunteer in different other ways, and I've worked a lot with the African population. And I've watched what's happened in different areas. Westbrook is one area that I've spent a lot of time with, and, and I still do. And the crime rate is incredible. One of the people I work with was 10 feet from the shooter when a couple got killed there, walking her eight-year-old son, who calls me grandma. So, it's, when, when you have this massive, I've had to do a lot of study in some of the stuff I do, but when you have a big increase, all of a sudden, of people, you tend to have more issues, especially when the community isn't really working together. And I think that we're asking for trouble to do something really quick without having communities, meetings, and learning the people and learning more about each other. And, and the police, I totally agree with understaffed and inability to get qualified workers has been another thing that's been on my mind, because I still see it. And so, I'm just, I don't need to give you all details, but there's, there's a lot that I'm concerned about in terms of Gorham actually being able to handle this with a quick growth rate. I, I think you're talking almost adding 15% to the current population with what you're doing there, and some of these 10 to 15% of people with it, and that's an awful lot to absorb quickly. So, I was curious if anybody here had actually done any research on communities that build that fast and see what happens. Yeah, that's all.
Thank you, and I didn't catch your name.
It's Paula Marshand.
Okay, thank you.
You're welcome.
Anyone else?
Good evening. Thank you for the invitation. My name is Jim Means. I'm a 30-year Gorham taxpayer. I'm surprised that this proposed contract zone has been positioned for a vote tonight. As far as I know, this is the very first look by the council of this zone, language drafted by the developer and reviewed by the planning board. This project will increase Gorham's residential stock and housing stock and total population by nearly 10%, with no limitations on how fast this can occur. A cursory look at the contract shows no requirement by the developer to fund the off-site water and sewer installation. There are no provisions to rebuild Brackett or McClellan Roads that will be damaged by the construction vehicles. Now, about the Town's view of South Gorham becoming another village, I ask you, how is Little Falls working out? Aside from sidewalk and lighting improvements, no progress has been made. The only convenience store is closed, many buildings are degrading. There can never be more than one viable village in Gorham, because the market forces will not support it. Villages need a full array of goods and service providers, not just an incidental beauty shop, massage parlor, or marijuana operation. This massive project destroys a large portion of the Narragansett Wildlife Sanctuary. The Town says one thing but operates quite differently. You say that green and open spaces are to be preserved, but then you grant zoning for dense development. Why is this project being rushed? Our community director said at the December meeting that this one has a very aggressive schedule to move forward. A planning board meeting set, member said in January, traffic is going to be a monster. Our Town Council Chair said of the 295-unit Roby Street development, quote, "This town is not ready for it. We can barely deal with the residential growth we have now." One Town, one Town Council member has been individually negotiating the proposed contract zone directly with a developer in violation of Town Council rules. The rule exists for transparency reasons and to avoid potential corruption. Additionally, the developer sent a letter request directly to the same counselor on November 19, 2005, asking for material changes instead of going to town staff. November 19th, 2005, asking for material changes instead of going to town staff. One counselor at the December town council meeting spoke about the, his favorable view of having the daily needs of residents met by commercial providers within the development without having to drive. This will not happen. Gorm Village will feel the brunt of about 1,500 additional cars going to the nearest grocery store, pharmacy, banks, et cetera. Brackett and McClellan Roads are not safe to walk or bicycle on. Gorm's public safety and infrastructure has not been considered. Adding almost 10% to our housing stock and population with no pace of growth control is irresponsible.
Mr. Means, could you finish up your comments?
Okay.
Thank you.
Our school facilities cannot be faced with a rapid addition of many hundreds of students, maybe 1,000. The town just this month issued an RFP for the first sewer study of South Gorm. No one knows what the public sewer will cost. It needs to be engineered before it costs us and what's going to be done. It makes no sense to grant the developer, and I was a developer, special rights without knowing very substantial facts. The developer paying millions of dollars for Gorm Public Water and Sewer makes this contract zone bilateral and illegal. In their eager quest to have South Gorm served by Public Water and Sewer at no cost to the town, the town council and planning board are abdicating their responsibilities. I urge you to vote no on this proposed contract zone. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other comments?
First of all, I want to publicly thank Councilor Sims. I sent an email to the town council, maybe a month or so ago, about the connector, and he was the only one that responded, and I appreciate his thoughtful and thorough response. So thank you very much for that. Some of what I have to say about the development at the golf course will sound a little bit I certainly echo my neighbors' concerns and thank Jim for his really thoughtful comments. In the 2/13, February 13th Gorm Times, there was a poll on large-scale residential development. And one of the questions in that poll was, do you believe you have enough information on the Robey Woods and Country Club projects to have an informed opinion about them, either for or against? And actually, I should have started by saying, my name is Pam Millican-Garza. I live at 26 McClellan Road. I've lived there for 42 years, so I think I have all my neighbors beat as far as that You know, we can, we can all access the plans for this development. I have them right here in my folder. So that information is available to us. What I don't have is enough information about how the town is going to absorb all of this residential growth. I mean, I have to trust, I have to trust that we're not going to build first and figure that all out afterward. But, you know, some of my neighbors have talked about traffic. I would argue that 900 residential developments means perhaps 1,800 more cars every day getting dumped onto McClellan Road and Brackett Road. I cannot think of an adjective that describes how absolutely undoable that. It's just impossible. And there's not a single person that I've spoken to that begin, can begin to wrap their head around how we're going to manage that. Now, I know I've heard the developer say, you know, that we're looking at, I think it was 15 to 18 years before this would be completed. So in 15 years, are we going to have four-lane highways replacing McClellan Road and Brackett Road? I don't know, I'm just so concerned about that. So basically, when I think about that question in the Gorm Times, what I want is an answer to that question. I want to know how this town is going to absorb all of this growth. And it's not even just traffic. I mean, for me personally, that's what impacts me the most. I don't have kids in the schools anymore, but I don't know how our schools absorb that. Somebody, I can't remember if it was Jim or someone else, commented about, you know, 900 more housing units using the services of our town, of our village, driving into the village to do their shopping or go to a restaurant for dinner. It's already an issue. And now granted, I'm sure in 10 or 15 years, we may have, who knows, maybe we'll have a market basket in town someplace. I pray it's not in my neighborhood. The second big concern that I have, I guess...
So we have, we have a time limit, so...
Okay. Can I just make one other point, please?
Yep, just finish up your comments, yep.
So the other big concern in, in addition to how we can even absorb all of this is, what's the vision for Gorm? I attended one of the forums, one of the candidate forums for town council before, last fall, and I asked that question. I asked you, Councilor Willis, is the vision that Gorm becomes the next Westbrook? Because that's what this golf course is going to look like. It's going to look like Spring Street and Westbrook, actually worse. I can't believe that there's anybody in our town that has that vision or wants that for this beautiful town that we live in. So I guess in addition to the infrastructure, I would ask that the people that are involved in the decision-making consider what our town is going to look like in 10 to 15 years. And I think most of us would say that we really want to preserve what we have, so thank you very much.
Thank you.
I think a lot of what has been said I will not repeat tonight. So I'm going to hit a couple of early units. My name's George Fercelli, Brookfield Court, and I did leave a three-page letter for each of you yesterday. I hope you were able to digest that before tonight. Couple of things that I'm, I'm going to hit on, which I don't know if it's been hit on strong enough right now, is I don't see the benefit the town will get from this contract zone, and I don't really agree with their language in the contract zone. Number one, it says, well, it's going to be a village type, which I think people have already shut down. And number two, it's going to bring sewage along Brackett Road. Well, at, at the other meetings that I've attended or watched on TV, the other option that was down here was to go to Saco, and I think council has already said, you know, it's going to be a zero benefit to the town of Gorm if, if it goes that way. The water line down Brackett Road, that'll be purely based on what the Portland Water District wants to do and hopefully will serve the Brackett Road area. How much will it serve? It depends on the, the sewer being there or not. Now, when you talk about the sewer going down Brackett Road, it's going to go from McClellan Road all the way up to the cross-county trail there, across, you know, cross-town trail where this major sewer is. That's an uphill and a downhill and an uphill and a downhill, and the, the builders already said that they need some additional pump stations along the way. Additional pump stations means additional property has to be taken for those pump stations. Not large pieces maybe, but still it has to be additional property. Now, where there is the force main, is there going to be a sewer coming that's going, a force main going uphill? Is it going to be a gravity sewer going downhill? So it serves Brackett Road? Because if it's just the force main, we'll have what we have over on Mozer Road right now, back in early 2000s. The Little Falls wastewater treatment plan was going to be abandoned, so there was a sewer put from Little Falls down Mozer Road, went back a Beal's Ice Cream there and connected into the major sewer on Hutchinson Drive. And a lot of that is force main up Mozer Road and nobody's, nobody can tie into it. So it, it's a lot of waste of money because that, that's what it is. So somehow, in the future, if you want to develop Mozer, you're going to have to do more sewer work. I don't want to see the same thing happening here along Brackett Road. If it's going to be done, it should be done right on Brackett Road. And one other thing, two other things, and I see the red light over there. I did point out a discrepancy between what the te- town manager had in his notes and what is written in the contract language, and I refer you my letter, to my letter for those details. It, it goes on when the, when the builder can actually start work out there and that, that issue. So I'll leave you with that. I think a lot of people said a lot of things tonight, and I really don't think this contract language is ready for approval.
Thank you. Anyone else? Yep. Just give us your name and where you're from, and just a reminder that we have four minutes. Go ahead.
Four minutes, okay. Hi, my name's John Dunphy. I live on Maillon Ave. I, I know some of these people. I don't know anybody up here. And I've, I've been in Maine about 30 years, so I'm, I came in from out of state, I lived in Leamington for about 20, and I was on, on appeals board, the planning board, the rec board. It's different to be on the outside, though, because I don't, I don't know anybody. I've never even been in this room before. But I disagree. You know, I say there's, there's going to be like, what, 2,700 homes built? Isn't that right? I say build more. I like pulling out on the Maillon Drive and like Richard Petty. I'm not that good, more like Kyle Petty, but I say get more houses. What's, what's there going to be, like 1,500 cars, 3,000 cars? Let's get, let's get more. I've only been clipped twice walking down the road. Let, let's get those numbers up. I say build more houses. And when the power goes out, they get it restored immediately. It's not a contest. We don't have generators running for three days. So I say build, build more houses. My daughter learned to pop the clutch, because when we get to the bottom of the hill and you got to pull out into traffic, you got, you got to get going quick. So she learned how to pop the clutch. And she'd say, build more houses so I can drive faster. What else? So I was going to be a teacher. I taught for three years, and when I moved to Gorm, some of my friends recommended joining the, the teaching at, at Gorm High School. I, I never taught there, but they recommended it. But I didn't apply because when I talked to the principal, he said, there's, there's too many teachers. We don't have enough kids. So we, we need more, more, more residents. So I say build more houses. Now, let's see, what other, what other positives do we have? The traffic, everybody talked about the traffic. I don't know the numbers about, I don't know the numbers about, like the sewer, and I don't know about the pot. Well, I, I'm an engineer and mathematician by trade, so I do know that from statistics, the, the population of Gorm, right now, you're at about 18,000. And from 2020 to 2025, it was predicted to go up about 0.9%. From 2025, 2030, it's predicted to go up by 1.6, 1.7%. That's Census Bureau stats. But if you do this, you can increase it by five times that. So build even more houses, right? So you can definitely blow it out of the water. And that's another, another point, the roads, the roads in Gorm are amazing. There's no potholes and it's very smooth. I used to ride bicycle, but I, I quit because the roads are too good. And the plowing, the, the plows, nothing against the plow guys, but there aren't enough roads for them to plow. So I think we need more neighborhoods, we need more roads for them to plow. So I say build more houses. And if you're only going to build, I think it's a mere 2,700, we can up those numbers. I live on, on Maillon and it's an animal sanctuary right there. And I wanted to put a rifle range in, but I wasn't allowed. The town said it was, it was not safe, there were animals, you couldn't discharge a weapon. So I wanted to put an air, airsoft, air pellet range in. My kids were on the rifle team and they said I couldn't even do that. So it's not good for the animals. But if you have, what is it, 2,700 homes going in there, that's definitely going to help the animal sanctuary. So build more houses. I'm obviously being sardonic, but I tried to hit some of the points they hit, but also hit some new points, so thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else? All right, seeing no one, the public hearing is now closed. Oh, hold on. Oh, sorry.
Hi. I only came, my name's Mike Marchionne, I live on Maillon Ave. So I basically came here tonight just to listen in, just to see what was going on, but I, I didn't even know about this till yesterday afternoon. And so there's just a few things that, that people had said. And yeah, the, the, the traffic is definitely a monster. And never mind, you know, the UPS trucks that zip through the neighborhood, the FedEx trucks that zip through the neighborhood, the rental Penske vans that zip through the neighborhood, and the independent contractor delivering packages to up your neighbor, right up your driveway to your house. And then there's the post office, daily, hourly, minute by minute. So the traffic is another. But what really concerns me is you're going to vote on something that the, the builder here was doing illegally? The developer broke the rules? You're going to vote? You're going to set a standard for other developers to come in and break rules and do things illegally? And, and you had mentioned you have a financial interest in this? On this docket, 2025, 3-3? Ms. Lavoy?
No.
Was this, was this it?
No, that was on a previous item.
Okay. I apologize. Um, yeah, so, all right, I still get the green light. I really don't have much more to say, but yeah, I mean, hundreds and hundreds of vehicles coming down McClellan and Brackett. And then it's like, okay, maybe if we put traffic signals at like Saco Street and Brackett and McClellan and Brackett and McClellan and South Street, and what if we put traffic signals at the Rotary? That's a good idea. And why don't we put tra- we, we could go on and on with how many traffic signals you'd need to control 12,000 cars coming down McClellan Road. And I would have to say that even Westbrook would have to put in more traffic signals to control the flow of, of traffic coming through Gorm. And, you know, anybody watching, listening are going to hear and there's whatever, you know, don't think that Wyndham and Buxton is exempt from all this, too. You know, this is going to affect a lot of people in a lot of ways. But really, what really concerns me is the comments I heard about things you're doing Things that were done without abiding by the rules? I believe Mr. Jim Means had mentioned that in the, the letter he was reading. Again, I just found out about this yesterday, and I'm only here just to listen in, but I oppose this development.
Thank you.
Thank you.
All right, going once, going twice. All right, now the public hearing's closed.
Proposed Order 2522 ordered that the town council create a contract zone on 170-plus acres of the former Gorm Country Club to allow a limited number of single-family homes as part of a larger mixed-use residential commercial development on McClellan Road, Zone South Gorm Crossroads, map 8, Lot 41, map 7, Lot 6, 7, and 8 as follows.
Is there a motion to waive the reading?
A, a motion to waive the reading to allow us time to, more time for discussion. I think we've all had a chance to read it.
All right, motion, is there a second to waive the reading? Second by Councilor Lavoy. All those in favor of waiving the reading due to length? 78s. And on to the item itself, is there a motion for the item?
So moved.
Motion by Councilor Segal, second by Councilor Lavoy. I'm going to look at you now.
Thank you, Madam Chair. So what you have before you is a, obviously a contract zone, coming back for the, coming back from the planning board. It was originally referred to the planning board by the town council for mixed-use development on the former Gorm Country Club property. The developers here this evening, I think, to answer any questions. We have staff here as well. The council kind of got a high-level summary in your packets. And we're here again to answer any questions. As a requirement of this project, let me back up. A, so just a reminder, this had a public hearing at the planning board, you have a public hearing, you had a public hearing here this evening. And a contract zone runs with the parcel. So it runs for the length of the parcel, or the, runs basically forever until amended by both parties for the zoning. And gives the council tools to, within the scope of the law, to allow items that don't necessarily conform to the existing zoning, but will get you to where you want to be. So as was previously discussed, there is a requirement to bring sewer and water basically utilities to the parcel. And staff can, and the developer can discuss that if you'd like. And do you have any questions for me or staff before we kick it off? Or questions?
Any questions for the town manager? All right. We'll go ahead with the discussion. Go ahead, Councilor Sims.
Yeah, I'll share a few comments. I'd like to acknowledge some of the comments that were made. I think some of the comments that were made, I, I'd agree with to, to a significant extent. I think there's also, I, I'd challenge some of what was said as well. I don't want to digress too much, but, you know, one of the things that was talked about a lot here is the traffic. Gorm is a very low-density place currently. We have a lot of roads for the amount of people that we have, and yet we still complain about too much traffic. And I really think we have to recognize that if we build a town where everyone is forced to drive separate cars for every single daily need, traffic problems are inevitable. Regard- Regardless of how many billions of public dollars we throw away on highway maintenance and expansion, it's a terribly expensive way to build our community. We could save enormous costs for our residents if we started building a town where people actually had freedom of choice in their transportation and housing options. We're a one-car family. We're saving tens of thousands of dollars annually by doing so. We took a trip to Disney World, the most magical place on earth with all the money we saved. And you know what about Disney World? No one drives there. Everybody walks. Except for the rides, except for the rides, so. So anyways, I digress enough there. But, uh, you know, we do, to address our budget challenges, we have to diversify our housing stock. And we have to allow different types of housing in our village center. I don't see why we're, we're trying to spend more money on more infrastructure to try to build another village. We need to focus on making our existing village more financially productive. I don't see how this contract zone proposal really gets us there. It just enables more single-family homes that we're probably gonna end up losing money on, kind of net annual, with, you know, single-family homes generally more likely to attract more kids. So I, you know, I like the commercial parts of what's proposed, but those aren't the priority here. The priority is the single-family homes. And I, we've already got an over, we're already outbalanced with more single-family homes relative to the rest of our housing stocks. So I would be willing to keep the conversations going with the developer. I wanna try to help the developer build something that can be net positive tax revenue for the town. I, I'm not, I don't feel confident that what we've got in front of us tonight is gonna really get us there.
Thank you. Any other comments? Go ahead, Counselor.
I guess I have a clarifying question, I think for the public, as much as anybody, either for the developer or staff. But what we're voting on tonight as a part of this contract zone is essentially just the ability for the developer to build the single-family or duplex houses. That the, uh, the rest of what is proposed there is part, is in line with the comprehensive plan. So if those 60 column, single-family or duplexes went away, we may get additional buildings, we may get additional units in that space. So from what we're looking at, what the decision that we're trying to make, it's not so much around all of the houses that was referenced earlier. It, it's really just the, what's shown in yellow, I believe, on that plan. But I'll let the developer speak more to that.
So I am Nick Triano with Triano Properties. I appreciate everyone's comments. I think some of them have good intents. And I think that a lot of them make perfect sense when you look at a project like this. That's to be built over 15 years. There's no undertaking there. I mean, it's, it's a lot of moving parts, a lot of stuff that needs to be done. In terms of doing stuff illegally, there's nothing here that's been done or that we are trying to do to be sneaky. This, I think next month makes 24 months that we're in this project. So there's been no short of time and effort and resources put into it. I, I think that one thing that needs to be addressed that hasn't been said is with, with or without this contract zone tonight, this lot is 5 to 15 units per acre. So if we get a no tonight, there's a very good chance that our Plan B, which is what our Plan B is, is to just not do the single-family houses. If we don't do those single-family houses, you're gonna see 1,600 units in this area. And there's no growth exclusion. We have a growth exclusion anyway with mixed use. So we're actually trying to slow the growth down and work with the town versus just doing this anyway. Now, I want to also mention that I want to live in this development. So we're not trying to hurt Gorm by any means. I'm, I'm a local person, so I'm a current Buxton person. So I, I just want you guys to understand that there's no harm that we are intentionally trying to create here for the town, for the development, for the school system. We're trying to do it at a very slow growth rate, which is why we're doing the 60 single-family house lots. The only thing that this contract zone has any precedence in is the single-family house lots. It's gonna take more than double mixed-use, uh, excuse me, uh, townhouse units to get the same thing that we wanna do with the single-family house lots. And the single-family house lots will oppose, will bring in more smaller developers to do, which will also reduce single-family house lots in other parts of town. Another thing is, we're not trying to create a second Gorm Village. That is something that I think Gorm, the town itself was looking for, and mainly the planning department. We are trying to create a live, live-work kind of atmosphere where people are able to use buses, they're able to have a bus stop, they're able to have, you know, good green space, they're able to commute, they're able to live and work in the same spot. So you're not gonna see a ton of cars. I mean, don't get me wrong, I know it's laughable, because of 1,500 units. It's fif, it's, or excuse me, 700, 800 units. It's probably 15 years out from seeing probably 200 of the last 800 units. So we're talking, in the next 36 months, from a year from now, when this even breaks ground, you would see 60 houses within the 36th month. So within 48 months and now, you'd probably see the first 60 units in. So let's, let's just think about that, five years from now, just about, to see 60 units. 60 units, there's that getting put in every year in Gorm, if not more than that. So I want you guys to understand how slow this is actually going to take. This is not gonna be 800-plus units like a snap of a finger. We have no intentions on that. If we don't get this contract zone, and I'm being transparent with everybody here, that's why I'm looking at you guys. I wanna make sure we all are on the same page. If we don't get this contract zone, we have to go quicker to pay for the utilities. We have to. And it's not a if, or it, or are we going to, we have to. We have to bring in more developers, we have to bring in more partners. We have to bring in more people to do it quicker. So I want you guys to all understand, there, there's 100% problems here, I get it. Main Department of Transportation looks at every single thing we do, everything any developer does, they look at traffic. It's not for anyone at the council or the town to determine traffic. Main DOT does it all. We, there's no favors, there's nothing. They will do what is necessary for this to be done, to make it so that it's a very viable, safe project for pedestrians and more, and all, all workers and anybody who inhabits the property. Uh, I'm just trying to try to, you know, kind of bring full circle on everything. The other thing with water and sewer, water and sewer is gonna be coming out of, down Brackett Road. So there's, there's not enough transmission means on the Saco Street side to do it. So Gorm is gonna have that coming down Brackett Road. And I, I'm sure there's other stuff that I'm leaving out. But I'm, like I said, I'm trying to be transparent with everyone, trying to be fair with everyone, answer as many questions as we can. Like I said, we are part of the community, we intend to be part of the community for a long time. These townhouses and these mixed-use buildings and these apartment buildings are some of the best things for generating taxes. They really are. Not so much seven units and under, 15 units and above. So 15 units and above, lot less people, that you see a lot of bikers, you see a lot, especially in the summertime, you see a lot of people using buses. And it's, it's very good tax revenue for the town. And it's not a ton of children, because you do not see children in these one- and two-bedroom apartments. And usually the three-bedroom apartments are three college kids that, you know, each share a third of the rent. So you're not seeing a lot of, um, tax-absorbing resources like children and school departments and all kind of other stuff. And finally, the, the town, there's no roads here that are being set up other than just the horseshoe on the lower side that the town would be taking over. So this is all being plowed and maintained by an HOA. The town's not taking any benefit from, they're not losing any benefits from it. The town is actually getting a, a ton of trails given to them. People from the outside can come in from Westbrook, Scarborough, Gorm itself, use the trails. There's gonna be a gym, a clubhouse. And there's also, I believe it's 17 acres of preservation land that's given back to the town for conservation land. So I just wanted to clarify, there's plenty of upside here that we can all use happily. And like I said, the project, on a viability standpoint, we are doing this contract zone to slow down the development. It's not to speed it up, it's to slow it down. I wanna make that very clear, very clear. So 60 units in, call it 24 to 36, 48 months, is very slow development, very slow. Versus having to put 130 units in, in the first 12 to 24 months to be able to pay for the water and sewer, because those units are less profitable to build. And not to mention, we have to build them ourselves. Single-family house lots, you can sell off, let somebody build three of them, another person build four of them, another person build five of them. It brings all the developers in Gorm, instead of having to build five here, 10 here, it brings them all to our development, allows them to build off of this development, and they'll do it over time. But it also allows this development to get water, sewer, and all the utilities to the area. So hopefully, I'm answering a lot of that. Like I said, you have to bring the people to the area before you bring the workplaces in. I've talked to many counselors about that, it's a huge concern. We can't set the project up to fail. A lot of people's livelihoods are involved in it. And I, I know that nobody would wanna see a project half-done either. So hopefully, there's more questions or more stuff I can help answer. We're here for the right reasons, I wanna explain that to everyone, all the counselors, I think, know that. I've talked to all of them once, maybe twice. But, you know, like I said, to think that we're doing anything that's wrong or anything like that, that's not how we are, that's not the type of people we are. We're here for the right reasons, and we're here to explain ourselves and be very transparent doing so. Thank you.
Thank you, Nick. I think David has another question for you.
Could I just ask a clarified question on the numbers that you were just throwing out there? You mentioned 60 units in 36 months, and because we're talking about 60 single-family homes, I wanna sort of draw a line that like, you're not talking about 60 single-family homes, I would imagine, based on sort of where those are laid out, uh, and shown in yellow there, that you're talking about 60 units, and those 60 single-family homes would be done over phases. Is that accurate?
So phase one is gonna be, you know, probably 21 single-family homes, which is the ones closest to me here, on the top right, bottom right corner. And then there's gonna be the other phase of, uh, single-family over there that are blue, uh, the blues live work, and then there's some more up top. Likely at some point on the final, when we go back to, uh, you know, do other stuff, there's, there's thoughts that go into this, but the way, we, we didn't have this phased yet. But what's probably gonna end up happening is all the single-family are gonna be phase one. But with phase one, there'll be phase one A, phase one B, phase one C. And you'll see probably 20, 20, 20, or 20, 15, 15, and maybe five. And you know, a lot of the reality ends up becoming the demand for these, right? In order to bring taxes down in Gorm, we have to bring units up. And that's just the reality of it, that's the only way to do it. Scarborough Downs is a prime example of that. You had to have a certain amount of units in to be able to bring everybody's, including the developments in the town's, taxes down. And the, the big apartment buildings are a huge advocate for that. So hopefully, that helps answer that question.
Thank you. Any other questions for Nick? All right, any other discussion? Between our...
Yeah, I have a, a few questions for the Town Manager, the Director of Community Development. So, so first of all, within this whole conversation, within the contract zone language, is there a requirement that sewer and water will be built with a certain timeframe associated with it?
Good evening, Tom Poirier, Director of Community Development. So yes, so if you look at the proposed contract zone, and if you look at additional performance standards, D-E3, it basically identifies the applicant shall connect the property to public water and sewer service. Design of these connections must be approved by the town and Polon Water District prior to issuance of any building permit for the development of one- and two-family dwellings or related infrastructure of the property. And the installation of public sewer and water shall be completed, inspected, and approved by the town and water district prior to issuance of the certificates of occupancy for any of the one or two families. So before those one- and two-families are livable, that sewer and water needs to be installed, built, and approved.
Excellent, thank you. I wanna speak to some of the public comment that I heard. So initially, Nick Triano reached out to me at the suggestion of actually another Town Counselor to talk about the project and discuss me sponsoring the motion. There is no issue with that. I have had other developers reach out to me and ask me to sponsor contracts own. And I say the same thing every time. What is it? I'm not gonna sponsor something that I don't know what it is. And I've said no to other developers. And the reason that I said yes to this one, once again, not any rules against talking about what they actually wanna do. In fact, that I, I would, I would never, ever bring a motion forward for something I didn't know what it was. This area, the South Gorm Crossroads, was zoned in our 2016 comprehensive plan to be a dense, mixed-use, and commercial zone. That was our goal for this area. We have heard constantly, we need more businesses, we need more commercial space. This was the opportunity for that. However, the one thing holding this zone back is the fact that there is not public sewer and water. That means that any kind of large commercial buildings would need to do their own well and septic. And, and same thing with, uh, large apartment buildings. And what I've seen in the numbers is that, as others have said, dense apartment buildings are positive for tax revenue. Because they have small apartments, they don't have kids, and small amount of space, big building, property taxes are very clear. It's the value of the building is how much taxes you pay. And our town here, everyone that's spoken, we have single-family homes on large lots. And most, almost all single-family homes, we're losing money on, especially the more and more spread out we get. So I saw this as, well, an opportunity for us to really utilize the South Gorm Crossroads for what its real long-term plan was, a place where there can be dense development and dense commercial development so that we can alleviate the taxes. The largest issue that I understood from, from the developer, Triano here, was that the financing for the sewer and water would be the difficulty. And that's where the single-family homes came in. It is easier to sell the lots for single-family homes quickly, to get that money quickly, to finance the sewer and water. And as we just heard from this question, thank you very much, this sewer and water needs to be completed before a single residence goes in. So we know the town is benefiting huge. And, and I do wanna clarify, huge, we've looked at the numbers in the past. It is, in my opinion, inconceivable for us to ever build the water down to, uh, build the water and sewer down to the South Gorm area with town money alone. It would be just a, a phenomenally huge expense. So this, to me, seemed like an opportunity. And I, I do wanna address some other concerns here, and, and one, you know, I'm gonna reiterate this. Building permits are not part of the question. If we say no tonight, they can still move forward with this. They just, well, won't do the sewer and water, which is really gonna limit their ability to actually do the commercial spaces as well. And the town loses out on that sewer and water extension, right? This is a huge extension that's going to help houses that are already there and this whole zone. Director Poirier, another question for you. I, I cannot remember if, do we, based on construction vehicle traffic, do we charge developers at the end based on perceived damage to roads? Is that a thing?
Good question. So what I will say, I mean, I think it's been said that this is the end of the public process. Well, I would say this is kind of the beginning. We're just talking about the contract zone. The actual details, we got, they're gonna have to meet the Town of Gorm's traffic standards, and they're gonna need to meet DOT's traffic standards. So as they develop the site, whether it's single families, duplexes, commercials, all the traffic is gonna need to meet our standards, and it's gonna need to get a traffic movement permit through DOT. So that public process hasn't even started yet, they haven't even started the design process. So we have to go through that. It's gonna be a substantial process with the planning board to make sure that they meet all those standards. And they're gonna need to meet them, because they're not asking for a waiver under the contract zone. All they're asking for is some provisions regarding allowing a certain percentage, 8%, I believe, of single-family duplexes for the extension of sewer to the site. Everything else, they've gotta meet our zoning requirements. So, um, yes, they've gotta meet it. Whatever offsites they'll have to do to meet that, it'll be a requirement as part of that, that subdivision in site plan review.
Thank you, thank you. The, um, the last piece, thank you to my fellow counselors for letting me through this. The last piece that was, that was mentioned is the Narragansett Game Sanctuary. last piece that was, that was mentioned is the Narragansett Game Sanctuary. This has come up a lot. I've, I've looked into this myself. I took a real deep dive because I heard people talking about it a lot. You know, the Narragansett Game Sanctuary, what is it? It's a large swath of this land in this area. And so, so for everyone's knowledge here, the Narragansett Game Sanctuary was put, put in place by the state a little over 100 years ago, the same bill that created Baxter State Park. And all it says legally is you can't hunt deer. That's all it says legally. I do want to remind you, 100 years ago, Gorham looked very, very, very different. But that's all it says legally, just so everyone is very aware of what the Narragansett Game Sanctuary actually is. So with that very long explanation, I do want to say I'm, I'm in support of this because it's going to get a sewer and water in that area. And if we don't do it, this still happens, but we lose out on all the best parts. So, thank you.
Thank you. Counselor Gagnon.
Don't sound enthused, Madam Chair.
I'm just, I'm just thinking, just reminding everyone that we're supposed to be debating and discussing. That's all I want to remind everyone.
That was the worst introduction for me. Thank you. So I like conceptually where this was going as a contract zone. I'm not liking the mix of the residential slash commercial use where people can have businesses out of their homes. I think that's the one deal breaker for me, and I'll be on no because of that one fact here. I don't, I don't think it lends itself in an experimental use of that area. There's other pieces that I've, I've taken into account here, whether it be the large amount of traffic that would occur once the project was complete or other things. I don't see really the large-scale benefit of extending sewer and water down bracket. Doesn't look like there's a, a lot of development that would run along it. I think my final point on this was, we've already approved one super-large subdivision as a council. This would be a second and would go against almost everybody's here's commitment as they ran for councillor to not do large-scale development, including myself. I had weighed the options of this one because I did find this one to be better planned. But given the factors, I'll be a no vote tonight. Thank you.
Thank you. Counselor Sims, go ahead.
Well, I, you know, I'd like to add a couple, a couple more thoughts, and I appreciate the developer coming up. There's aspects of what's being proposed that I think are really interesting as well, and I think could be positive for the town. I would prefer to see us continue working with the developer. Personally, I really feel like we need to take a harder look at alternative ways of trying to help them finance what they want to do without having to have the 64 single-family homes. I think we have, I think there are ways to look at that that we haven't fully vetted yet. And even just, I mean, we've got, you know, as everybody knows, Senator Collins is now the chair of the Appropriations Committee, so everybody's, there's a, there's a whole new game of attempting to access federal funding. I know we tried that route before, but that was before Senator Collins was, was in that position. I don't want to see all the work that's been done just be thrown away tonight. I would, I would be much more supportive of, you know, tabling this or, you know, giving the, the developer and the town more time to try to work out. I mean, the developer mentioned some, some, you know, you mentioned what happens if we don't do this plan. I would, I would be very interested in understanding better what the other options might be. I, it's possible I might be more supportive of those. So that's stuff that I'd like to keep the conversation going. I don't want to see it just end here. So, you know, I guess I'd, I'd propose that, I don't have to make the motion just yet if anybody else wants to.
No, I just, I would, I would rather hear from the rest of the council just to see where, what people are thinking, so I don't know.
I don't have much to say about this, that already hasn't been said. I'm going to support this. I, I think the biggest key of this is water and sewer. And as Counselor Siegel said, I don't see a way this town's going to be able to afford to run sewer and water to this area of town where we want dense growth. So for that, I'm willing to make this contract or support this contract.
Thank you. Counselor Kush, go ahead.
Yes, and I would say pretty much the same thing that Counselor LaVoy said. This has come before us once before, and it has been to a public hearing at the planning board. And we do have in front of us a recommendation from the planning board to go ahead with this contract zone. So in my mind, the people that should have looked at it have looked at it, and I defer to their judgment.
Thank you. Counselor Willis.
I make another comment. Larger comment to some of the earlier comments that were made. One thing I've learned in, in sitting up here and getting more involved in all of this is we are bound by so many things that have happened before we sit here. And a big piece of that is like the comprehensive plan. There's another comprehensive plan that sort of the, the ingredients have begun to, to inform that. And I would encourage everybody who wants to have a voice to get involved now, that often, once that comprehensive plan is formed, it's too late to come in and say, we don't want this development here. That's not what we're voting for or voting against. That, that's part of the comprehensive plan. It's allowed. So we're, we're working within the guidelines of what we have and what the comprehensive plan says. And so if you want to have a voice in what happens in Gorham in the future, you've got to start working on that now as we build the comprehensive plan going forward. So that's more of an outside plug to get involved, but it's also just something I've learned in these last, like, five months, that we get here, and here's what we've got in front of us, and this is what we've got to deal with, and if we say no to that, we get this. And so it, I'll be supporting this because of the water sewer piece and sort of the alternative where, where it's headed.
Thank you. You look like you have something you want to say, if you want to go ahead.
I, I do. So I just want to say, and I kind of want to reiterate this, I think it's very helpful, you know, Counselor Sims and Counselor Gagnon, you know, just because I think you guys are both on the fence here a little bit, and I think maybe more so the opposite direction. You know, a lot of this comes down to, you know, I think a lot of the people's, including myself, the town's concern here is more on density, not on the single-family houses. So I want to just reiterate that. I think everyone's here tonight because of the density, not because of the single-family houses. The only thing this contract zone represents is the single-family houses. So everyone here that's upset, and I just want to, I just want to reiterate this, we're actually working with you guys, and I know it doesn't seem it, it really doesn't, but if they get rid of these single-family houses or they ask us to get rid of them, that's probably 300, 400, 500, 600 more units that's going to go because they're going to be huge apartment-style buildings. So just do understand, I mean, it's common sense, right? Like, I mean, 25 single-family house lots is going to be 300, 400 units. So we've got 60 of them here, you're talking another 700, 800 units. So if we get rid of these, we're, it's not like we're not going to use the land, we're going to have to use the land. We're actually dropping back the density a little bit here by doing this. We, we fall between 5 and 15 units per acre, we're at 7. We can double, and we're only at, we're at 900 or 820. So my point is just realize that this could go up to 1800 if we get rid of these single-family house lots. So to think that we're looking out for our best interest, we're really looking out for the town's best interest, not having to pay for it. We're looking out for the town's best interest, not having to fund any of the, you know, offsite stuff or anything like that. And we're also looking for everything else where we're actually slowing down all the profitability for us by paying for this utilities and taking five, six years on the front side. Most developers don't do that, and they just, they, they don't care to do that. So I just want to reiterate that, that we're actually taking a loss on the front of this to try to fund it so that the town doesn't have to. And, and like I said, there's, there's no bonus here for us. So I just want you guys to understand that, take a real hard look at it and realize that we're really trying to do what's best for the town here. And as far as the live-work units, Counselor Gagnon, you know, we're working with the town planning department to make those work. There's a very good chance those go away and we bring the, you know, the yellow ones up on the top, back down to the bottom, and just put more, just a few more townhouses up top, just to compensate. So like maybe 3, 4, 10 more units up top. But we're not talking hundreds of more units. So my point is, we're, we're trying to work with the planning department. I think we've had, you know, 90 to 120 great days of working through all the, you know, language and everything, and, you know, it's drafted by town staff, to be honest with you guys all. And, you know, beyond that, like I said, we're going on 24 months of the project. So we're doing everything by the book. It's 100% right, and so far, to my knowledge, there's been no favors done on either, on either behalf. It's been 100% by the book.
Thank you. So I guess I'll be the last to chime in on this. I remember when I first got on the council, we talked about bringing sewer and water to South Gorham. So that was 13 years ago, and we talked about paying for it ourselves, bonding it, things like that. So that was something that I've always thought that we need to do if we want to develop South Gorham and however we want to develop it. Like Counselor Willis said, the comprehensive plan gives us some sort of direction on doing that. That being said, I did vote against the ROBE contract zone. Single-family houses just make me uncomfortable. I understand the reasoning for it. I understand to some other points that have been made, we're either going to get this or that. And I feel like that's what happened with the ROBE contract zone as well. It was, we either do this or that. And so either way, this project's going to happen. I would prefer that we keep open lines of communication and with the public and, you know, with you and the public and everything else to make sure that this is, you know, what we want it to be. I guess we want it to be a benefit to Gorham. We want it to work well with its neighbors. I guess whenever we put in something new, that's what I worry about is the current residents and that it works well with the neighbors. From all the discussions I've had with Nick at different meetings, the GDC meeting, things like that, I think you've been very upfront with everyone. So it is a tough decision. If the council would want to have further discussions, I would entertain that as well. But I think everybody's kind of said their piece. So I, I wouldn't be opposed to discussing it more at a workshop if that made people more comfortable, or we can just vote on it tonight, so. Go ahead.
I'll make a motion to table it for a month to further investigate alternative funding opportunities as well as alternative design options. I would like to have a little bit better understanding of what those are. And so, you know, I'll make that motion.
Okay. Is there a second?
I'll second that.
Okay. All right. You would like to table it? Is that, I'm just looking to you.
And I don't want to, just to be clear, I don't want to hold it up for a long time. I want to make it, I want to make it prompt.
So you have a workshop or, is that your recommendation? Or is that, I mean, just saying?
My recommendation is the council deliberates as much as you want to, but, or I think Tom is going to hop in. The council is welcome to do that if that's what you want to do, assuming it's, you know, agreeable to the developer to move forward with that. But any substantial changes from the contract zone, it will have to go back to the planning board again.
Okay.
And then it will have to come back here. So just in full transparency, as far as a public process, you probably, you'd add three to four months to it. Would that be fair, Tom?
Yes.
Assuming that changes were made to it, you know, outside the norm of what's here tonight.
Absolutely. And then I guess the only other funding option I think that's available is the town, right? Is that what we're looking at, is the town option?
So we just had a tax increment financing workshop. We were informed that other municipalities utilize tax-inference financing to help developers make the math work when they're struggling to make the math work. I feel like we have not fully investigated that option here. I would like, and I'm, and I'm personally, I'm not a huge fan of TIPS generally. This strikes me as an, as an instance where it might be more effective to consider it. So, and I recognize that the town and the developer have already been working for too long. I hate how long we, we put the developers through the wringer on this. We get, I feel like we don't get involved soon enough. So, you know, I, I, I'm not trying to hold it up, I'm just, I'm trying to better understand what the other options might really be.
Go ahead.
Thank you, Madam Chair. I'll, I'll be voting no for this tabling. I think we should just have an action tonight. By my count, there was a 4-3 vote to move it along, so in fairness.
Thank you. Are you good with it?
I'm not one of the 4-3s, but I'm helping along here.
Yeah, I'm, I'm okay moving it to vote. I just was also willing to listen if it was going to be a month, but to Tom's point, it's a whole lot longer than a month. And if there's not alternative options that would get us water and sewer there, you know, I would still be in support of voting yes tonight.
Okay. Do you want to keep your motion?
Yeah, I'll, I'll keep it out there. I mean, someone has a second.
Yep. No, David already did.
They have a second. Oh, yeah, so let's.
All right, so let's vote on the, on tabling the item.
Yeah.
All those in favor? Counselor Sims and myself? All those opposed? Everyone else? All right. So back to the, yeah, we're going to go right to the item to vote? All right. All, everybody understands what we're doing? We're voting on the original item? All right, all those in favor? Kush, Willis, LaVoy, and Siegel? All those opposed? Myself, Sims, and Gagnon. Thank you.
Public hearing number three on item 2025-3-4. Public hearing to hear comments on a proposal to create a contract zone to support an agritourism venue at 64 Flagy Meadow Road, Zoned Urban Residential Map 40 Lot 1.
All right, we'll just give everyone a second here to clear out, and then... Just one second, then I'll ask for a motion. All right, is there a motion on the item?
Motion to, oh, sorry.
Oh, yeah, so hold on a second. Sorry, sorry. I had to open the public hearing. I skipped to it. All right, public hearing on this item is now open. If anyone wishes to speak on this item? I think everyone's leaving. I don't think anyone wants to talk. All right, the public hearing is closed.
Proposed Order 2523, order that the town council create a contract zone to support an agritourism venue at 64 Flagy Meadow Road, Zoned Urban Residential Map 40 Lot 1 as follows.
Counselor Chair?
Yes.
I'd like to make a motion to waive the reading due to its length.
All right, is there a second?
Second.
Second by Counselor Sims. In favor of waiving the length? All right, seven yeas. All right, is there a motion on the act of, item now?
Make a motion here.
Counselor Siegel, is there a second? Second by Counselor Willis. All right, do you, or Tom can?
Thank you, Madam Chair. I can give you a high level and then kick it over to Tom. You have before you another contract zone for the flats to allow uses for business opportunities on their property that aren't necessarily allowed as specifically in our, in our ordinances. And I want to point out that a lot of times, it could be, it's a permitted use in the zone, or it could be flexible within the zone, but it's not a good idea to apply that throughout the entire zone of Gorham, or all the zones in Gorham. So opportunities like this pop up from time to time to help businesses, especially in an agritourism, tourism field, and obviously, it's a benefit to, for them to be able to use their property for a higher-value use. I'm going to throw that out there for Counselor Sims. So Tom's here to answer any specific questions on the actual language from the planning board. We can go from there. Thank you.
All right, so I actually sponsored this to begin with, but I have some questions. I watched the planning board meeting. Could you just highlight the changes that they made from the original? I know we didn't really have contract zone language, but were there, I feel like there were a few things that they added in that we didn't originally discuss, but...
Yep, so what the, the planning board did is more dialed in the language to be consistent with the agritourism ordinance. So a lot of the languages and the uses, we utilized the agritourism allowed in the rural district just to be comparative. So it was a lot of looking at the rural kind of entrepreneurial, excuse me, agritourism under the rural, rural district, and then utilized the thing here. Basically, it had to do regarding the use of the barn buildings and those agricultural buildings that she may want to use as other facilities in the future. If she wants to do a little bit of light manufacturing in those barn buildings as, as they come out of farm use, that would be allowed. So really, it was regarding that. And then it ties into the performance standards regarding agritourism, regarding hours of operations, setup times, and all those things. So really, it was... So, really, it was, it was just making it more consistent with that, those standards. And those are the changes being proposed.
Okay, so they didn't change any of the attendance numbers or anything like that?
No, I think we added some clarification regarding parking. I think before it was very specific. We identified as long as the parking was in a certain area and they gave us kind of permission to utilize that parking, it gave more flexibility more than anything, but it did not reduce the numbers or anything like that.
Okay, so then they designated, I noticed in here, the yellow field as a certain area. I don't think we did that at the beginning. I think we were just saying she could use the property.
No, that was identified in her request. So, basically, that's what she identifies this property as, yellow fields. I think as a marketing strategy she's utilizing to get this farm. So, as part of her proposal, that's what she identified in that plan.
Okay, thank you. Any other questions, comments? Councilor Kush, go ahead.
Yeah, my question was just basically the, is it sort of even to have the contract zone to use the buildings that way in agritourism? Or is one, do you think one is more prevalent or likely to happen?
I think the easiest ability to utilize that field is with a tent. Like, to me, because of NFPA requirements or fire or code requirements to upgrade a barn for an activity center or for personal occupancy is a heavier lift than just putting a tent on temporarily just to have a quick event and then taken down. So, I think in the short term, you'll see that. Maybe long-term, she may look to do something else down the road, but I think that's a lot longer term.
Thank you. Thank you.
Thank you.
Councilor Lavoy?
Yep, to Tom, noise concerns for events that's all going to follow town ordinance, correct?
Correct. So, so under F, the applicant will meet other standards, Chapter 1 rural district. That talks about the noise and everything else. So, they're going to have to meet the noise standard that's required in our ordinances. And we have a number of them.
Thank you. And I know when we saw this November, my original concern was parking. And I saw that that was addressed as well, so happy to support this one.
Thank you. Any other comments? Councilor Gagnon?
Thank you, Madam Chair. I will not be in support of this one tonight. I'm not in support primarily because we seem to have inconsistency starting to creep in here with our contract zones and what's a use and where and what we're being told by the community director here of what is and isn't allowable in our zones. We supposedly move away from our comprehensive plan on some things, but then just ignore it on others. I find it just very frustrating that if we want to do something, we have trouble or we're told no or other things. But when other things come through that are like this, that are outside the box, we're okay. So, I'm a no on the inconsistency now forming.
Thank you. Anyone else? All right, all those in favor? Six yeas. All those opposed? One, Gagnon.
Public hearing number four on item 2025-3-4. Public hearing to hear comments on a proposal to make revisions to the current zoning to include Gorham Village Center District, Little Falls Village Center District, urban commercial, development transfer overlay, and office residential districts to amend setbacks, improve service ratios and building heights in support of economic development. Minister responsible.
Public hearing number four is now open if anyone wishes to speak on this item. Seeing no one, public hearings closed.
Proposed Order 2524, order that the town council make revisions to current zoning to include Gorham Village Center District, Little Falls Village Center District, urban commercial, development transfer overlay, and office residential districts to amend setbacks, improve service ratios and building heights in support of economic development as follows.
Council Chair?
Yes.
The reading due to the length?
All right, is there a second? Second by Councilor Sims. All those in favor of waiving the reading due to the length? Seven yeas. All right, is there a motion on the item? Councilor Lavoy, is there a second?
Uh, second.
Second by Councilor Siegel. All right. You, Tom?
Thank you, Madam Chair. I think I'll kick it off to Tom. But I know the ordinance committee debated this pretty heavily before it came back to the council. Four-year review. And it's, especially in the village districts, Tom, this deviates minimums and maximums compared to what we had as far as definitely how far off the road you had to be before, correct?
Yeah, I think it provides more direction. And I think, and I know the ordinance committee is here, so they can correct me if I'm wrong, but what the ordinance committee was looking to do is provide more guidance and flexibility for infill development in our village districts and any area surrounding it. So, they looked at all the surrounding, not only village centers, Little Falls Centers, urban commercial, where can they provide or make some amendments to allow flexibility for more infill development? And that was, that was the genesis of the proposal in front of you. The planning board looked at it and recommended adoption.
You?
Madam Chair, if I may?
Go ahead.
Yep, very much so, infill development and just very simply allowing for buildings to make more use of the lot they're on because the larger the building, the more the property tax is going to be. So, thus, it's going to lead to economic development because the lots are, you're able to build more on them. So, it's just very, very clear-cut in that regard.
All right, Councilor Gagnon?
Thank you, Madam Chair. So, I will not be in support of this one either. I think it removes some of the characteristics that make Gorham unique in its neighborhoods. I could see it if it was part of maybe a comprehensive or strategic vision of the area. But this is just everywhere, everything and everywhere, so, thank you.
Thank you. Councilor Kush, go ahead.
Yeah, I'm not sure who to answer this. Is it possible to find out briefly why one of the people on the planning board opposed this item?
Yes, I believe he stated at the planning board meeting, he didn't understand that it was going, it was going to do enough to do that infill development that was looking for. So, his more thought was, I don't know what we're getting for making the change, and that's why he voted against it.
Thank you. Thank you. Councilor Sims?
Just to be clear, I would be supportive of making further changes, but it was difficult enough to get this forward. So, it's kind of a baby step sort of thing. I would love to see us be more open and have a better vision. This gets us part of the way there. It's a step in the right direction. So, it's certainly not perfect. It could be better. But I think it's a marginal step in the right direction. I hope it will have some impact. I don't think it will do any harm.
Any other comments? Go ahead, Councilor Willis.
Just for the ordinance committee, I guess, urban residential district maximum front yard setback 50 feet. Can you just help me with the thought process there in terms of, I buy a lot, I want to build a house on that, I have to build it within 50 feet of the road. Is that right?
Just to clarify, it's only within the overlay district, correct? There's a, there was an overlay district corrected for it? And it's kind of about a mile or two radius around the village. Is that accurate?
No, this is for all the urban residential district. This change would affect everybody.
Okay, my apologies. I misunderstood.
That one gives me a little bit of pause just to, I was hoping to better understand the rationale behind it. With, without that, I'd have some questions. So, I can...
Councilor Siegel, go ahead.
Yeah, as the ordinance committee chair, I can speak to a bit of the rationale. The goal of this is to make the best use of our densest areas of Gorham. So, our, the village areas and where the buildings are the most dense, making sure that when, over time, new development comes in, right? This isn't impacting existing houses. Existing houses aren't going to be pushed or moved, none of that. But when new development comes in, it is in line with what we want for a village. So, within that, making sure that there is a maximum for front setbacks, so you don't have somebody just not utilizing the lot to its fullest potential, which we see a lot of those houses in the village do. They are small lots and some of our best, we have, some of our best value per acre buildings are actually in the village on the small lot. So, yeah, that's the logic for it.
If you build towards the front on one of those lots, though, don't you make the back of the lot unusable? What do you mean unusable? I'm not following that correctly. So, like, say I have a nice deep lot and the furthest I can build my house back is 50 feet. But then I've got a whole bunch of land behind me. That land is still pseudo-unusable, correct? It's more about the lot size and somebody can...
You could put an accessory dwelling unit on it. You could do any number of things.
Provision that we just approved as well, that you can put a back lot.
Yeah, so just want to clarify what Councilor Willis is saying. I think he's saying it's easier to develop the front if the back's already been developed. So, I think he's, his more concern is like, if you identify the 50-foot and you require people to build the front, it may be harder for them to develop the backup.
The infill there is less likely in the future, is my thought process. I mean, I think when you look at a lot of the, in the village areas, we do have a lot, a number of lots that you'd be surprised by how much land is out behind it. But the house is already up front and there's all this land that's undeveloped, that's untapped. But you kind of can't get there from here because you built the house up against the setbacks. And so, that's the one that just worries me. I don't know if tonight's the night to attack that or how to attack it properly, but I think it could have some more conversation around it.
I mean, if you're coupled to all the language, you could pull that maximum front yard setback for that one district out and then send it back to the ordinance committee for more discussion and then pass everything else and then just have more thought on it if that's something you want to do.
So, I wonder how many, excuse me, empty lots we have as more of a comment that this would apply to? And say you've got this old house that's 100 feet back and you're going to demo it and build a new one, the new one would have to comply with this new ordinance? Is that correct?
Yes.
Okay.
To Councilor Lavoy's point, I don't know how many empty lots, yeah, there would currently be, that would be impacted by this. However, if the rest of the council would like this one item struck out for ordinance to take another look at, it'd be amenable.
Yeah, I'd be happy. And the point Councilor Willis raised as well. I mean, just all of that stuff. I'm happy to take all that stuff into consideration.
You look like you want to say something.
Brenna Estim, I ran out of coffee a while ago. Thank you, Madam Chair. I guess I have a question for Tom. If the council strikes out that one item tonight, passes that, this, that's not enough, that's not a substantial change. We'd have to go back to the planning board for that one specific item. What the council's discussing is if the council wants to send that specific discussion on that specific item back to the ordinance committee, they could still pass this tonight? Correct. Thank you.
I would be in favor of that. And I'm not saying I'm against this change. I'm just trying to understand it better. Just to clarify for the ordinance committee.
So, do you want to make an amendment to strike that out and/or send that piece to the ordinance committee?
Yes, I would make that amendment to strike the, or send the maximum front yard setback in the urban residential district of 50 feet back to the ordinance committee for further review. And would you like me to?
And then...
And then...
And it's not in what we'd be voting on?
Correct. So, remove it from the item as we're going to vote on, but vote on the rest of the item as it sits.
Yep. Is there a second?
Right here.
Okay. All right. Second by Councilor Lavoy. All right, any discussion on that part? All those in favor of the amendment? Seven yeas? All right, and now we can vote on the item as amended? All right, all those in favor? Kush, Willis, Lavoy, Sims, and Siegel? All those opposed? Gagnon Phillips. Thank you.
Item 2025-3-6, action to forward to the planning board the termination of a contract zone agreement. Councilor Willis sponsoring. Proposed Order 2525, order that the town council forwards to the planning board for public hearing and recommendation terminating a contract zone agreement for 34 County Road, 15.69 acres on map lot, map 6 Lot 14 at the request of the current property.
Is there a motion? Yep.
So moved.
All right, go ahead. Is there a second? Second by Councilor Lavoy. All right, Councilor Willis?
Yeah, I'm happy to briefly...
I was going to say either you or I.
Do sit and jump in as you want. But we have a landowner on a county road who had a contract zone that has been passed on to her from her mother that she created with the town of Gorham, had looked into developing that. It didn't make sense with the contract zone as it sits right now. And so, they're requesting for it to return to the underlying zoning. So, the applicant is here if we have any questions for her this evening. So, I'd open it to the board for discussion if that works.
Yep. That's fine. And just for procedurally, the way this goes, it's the same as the creation of a contract zone. You have to go to the planning board. It's the same thing, it's just in reverse. We have to go to the planning board for a public hearing and for terminating the contract zone. Is that correct?
Correct.
Okay. Any discussion? Councilor Gagnon?
Sure. Thank you, Madam Chair. So, in regards to the termination of the contract zone here agreement, this was the great gold rush of contract zones of 2010, 11, where Hans Hansen, I believe, was putting through many contract zones. And then, following suit, everybody asked for a contract zone in that area, basically. To create a uniformity, it made sense at the time. I don't think anything has come up from any of the contract zones that we've done in that area. That being said, I'm not looking to remove any contract zones unless the town has made whole on the costs to put through each and every one of them. There is a fee that's associated with them. This, these are not terminable contracts that you just can revert back. We've had several of these on the docket tonight. There needs to be a uniformity by the council and the town, and I'm not seeing it. And so, I've been outspoken, I think, for three years on these things now. So, unless we're being made whole for the time of staff, the fee that's associated with it, I don't want to support this unless those considerations are taken into account.
Thank you. Go ahead, Councilor Siegel.
Very much. Thank you, Madam Chair. I would agree with Councilor Gagnon if the lot were, you know, say, a business LLC or somebody owns multiple lots. The person coming before us to terminate the contract zone isn't even the person responsible for the contract going into place. So, it doesn't feel fair for us to punish someone else by making their, you know, by having them pay more as well as this being just an individual land owner. But I do agree with you if someone, if it's someone that owns lots of land or an LLC, that the town should be made whole for their work. But for this instance, very specifically, it's just a person who, yeah, isn't even responsible.
Thank you.
Madam Chair, if I may?
I'm just going to have Councilor Kush go ahead and then I'll let you...
Thank you. Just a clarifying question, please. Because I see in another contract zone, we have an application with a fee. So, when this zone was created, was a fee paid?
And then, there's a, there's a fee to terminate, correct?
Thank you, Madam Chair. There is a fee to terminate. But I believe a lot of those contract zones, when they were formed, there was no fee at the time for that to create them. But for this process to terminate, yes, there is a fee.
And our contract zones that we've done recently, not that particular?
Yes, recently, relatively recently, before they even go to the planning board, that fee is paid.
Okay. All right, thank you. Councilor Gagnon, go ahead.
I agree with Councilor Siegel in his sentiments that the party in question may have inherited, you know, the issues and the deed restrictions that are there. That is neither my concern. That is neither my concern as it is a consistency amongst all landowners and the ones that have asked for these restrictions. And so if I were to buy that lot from them, I would have to deal with the same things and I don't think I would get the same leniency. So we have to be consistent in how we're executing these because the ones in the past are coming forward as not being done. And so it creates a legal conundrum, in my opinion, not as a lawyer, but we have to be consistent, the law says in these.
So, Willis, go ahead, yeah?
Yeah, a question and maybe clarifying on that application fee. The way I read the contract zone when it was formed, there was a $3,500 application fee, but that was essentially like, I don't want to say waived, but moved till it was developed. So that, that was going to be paid when it was developed. So I don't believe that $3,500 has been paid and that would just be something to clarify as we look at how we're doing this.
Right, right. Yep. All right, any other questions? All right. All those in favor? Yeas, all those opposed? Councilor Gagnon?
Item 2025-3-7, action to consider 2520, 20, 2025, 2026 boards and committee appointments, Appointment Committee sponsoring. Proposed Order 25-26, order that the town council make appointments to various towns, boards, and committees as recommended by the Appointments Committee at their meeting on February 24th, 2025, as follows.
So before you read all the names, we have a couple names that needed to be added or switched, so just so everybody knows. So under the Conservation Commission, it should be Steven Shabat, okay, instead of Tom, Thomas Maza. So that was, if everybody would understand that. And then there's one other change to the Board of Voter Registration Appeals. There was a blank spot and we were waiting to find out if the person could fill that position because they were an election worker, correct? Is that what happened? Okay. And that name is Linda McLean. So we need to amend the order to add those two names, their motion to add those two names? Okay, by Councilor Siegel. All right, is there a second?
I'll second.
Second by Councilor Lavoy. All those in favor of adding those names? Seven yeas? All right, so item as amended, if you'd like to read all the names?
So for the planning board, we have Russell Frank, David Walsh, and Steven Crisafoli. For the GEDC, Peter Mason, Mark Curtis, and Benjamin Gilman. For the Board of Appeals, Gary Baca, Michael Weisman, and Craig Sterling. For the Fair Hearing Board, Timothy Farwell. For the Conservation Commission, William Moreno, Steven Shabat, and Steven Rowe. For the Board of Trustees, Baxter Memorial Library, Keith Potts, Geraldine Day, and Virginia Wildacross. For the Historic Preservation Commission, Lawrence Peterson and Linda Whitten. For the Board of Voter Registration Appeals, Sarah Fleming and Linda McLean. Board of Assessment Review, Marilyn Amoroso. For the Revolving Loan Fund Committee, Jeremy Hankin and April Edwards. And for the Board of Health, Catherine Garrard.
All right, is there a motion?
So moved.
All right, is there a second? Second by Councilor Lavoy. I think that probably Councilor Siegel will say this, but obviously, thank you to everybody who volunteered and applied and there was probably more people than spots, so, yep, if you want to add anything.
No, you're just, I'm going to say it every time. It's my donate blood. Everyone that applied was, was really good and it's always a hard decision. I've been on the Appointments Committee for my entire term, so it's been three years of just meeting people in Gorham and this town truly is different. People really care, people really want to do better for the town and, and I really appreciate everyone coming in. And, and I would please, please, please encourage everyone to, if you were unfortunately not picked tonight, continue to apply, continue to look at other organizations around town that are doing great things. Other counselors may plug them, but you know, the Friends of the Baxter Library, the Gorham Village Alliance, they're organizations that are doing great work, that are deeply involved in the community that aren't a committee. And frankly, then they don't have to deal with some of the bureaucracy of dealing in the town, so there's some positives, too. But I just want to say, yeah, thank you to everyone that applied.
Thank you. All right. Any discussion? All those in favor? Seven yeas?
2025-3-8, action to consider accepting an extension of Elkins Road for the purpose of building a turnaround while providing a driveway access, Councilor Phillips sponsoring. Proposed Order 2527, order that the town council hereby authorizes the town manager to accept a warranty deed from Thomas Beagle and Christine Beagle as grantors to the town of Gorham as the grantee with regards to a portion of the real property located on, off of Elkins Road, which parcel is designated as tax map, tax map 115, lot 15, for a turnaround which acceptance is conditioned upon the grantors preparing and providing the deed and other necessary documents related to the conveyance, subject to review by the town attorney and meeting all applicable road requirements as set forth in the Land Use and Development Code, subject to the town's approval.
Is there a motion?
So moved.
Is there a second?
Second.
Second by Councilor Gagnon. So this was a request made by the Beagles and they made an offer for the, the property to create a turnaround at the end of the road. I'm going to let the town manager explain the details.
Yes, thank you, Madam Chair. So the, the Beagles and the town have a mutual problem where Elkins Road kind of just ends. It's not, there's no great turnaround. It's one of the older roads in town and they graciously volunteered to deed a turnaround to the town. And then that allows the ability for a family member to build a house for them, so it's a win-win for both parties. And in full transparency, Terry and the Beagles are going to work around crafting that turnaround to the best of their ability. It's not going to be perfect, but the town attorney wrote up some stuff for us to accept a deed, assuming the council's okay with it. But again, I think it's a win-win for both parties on one of our older roads right outside the village, so, thank you.
Thank you. Any questions, comments?
Due to the town manager, this is a public road, correct?
Correct, yeah, which essentially just stops, so it's kind of one of these, I'm sure 100 years ago, there might have been something, but now it's just kind of stops at the end of the road. Most of the homeowners work with Public Works to accommodate it, but it'll, it'll resolve the issues.
Any other comments, questions? All right. All those in favor? Seven yeas?
Item 2025-3-9, action to consider establishing an affordable housing committee to provide recommendations to the town council on policies to increase affordable and workforce housing in Gorham, Councilor Siegel sponsoring. Proposed Order 2528, order that the town council creates an affordable housing committee of no less than five, but up to nine members, to provide recommendations to the Gorham Town Council to improve affordable housing in the community. And be it further ordered that the town council will approve guidelines and bylaws for the committee once the committee is seated.
Is there a motion?
So moved.
Is there a second? Second by Councilor Sims.
Thank you. I had a constituent bring this to me, telling me about how in Yarmouth, there was a really successful committee created that created proposals and policies for how they could increase affordable housing in Yarmouth and suggested that we try it in Gorham and I thought it was a great idea, especially given, I know, affordable housing is a big focus in a lot of people here. So I know we at the council have discussed it before and there's been some hesitation. So the idea here is to bring a lot of passionate people in Gorham together into a room to produce some recommendations for us to look at so we can hopefully have at least one affordable housing unit in Gorham.
Thank you. Any questions, comments? Go ahead, Councilor Gagnon.
Thank you, Madam Chair. So I'm still waiting for the results of the affordable housing that we already approved two years ago and that the town was supposed to come back to the council with its recommendations and abilities to create a housing authority, which would be very similar to this. So I think this is just a duplication of what I think is something that's already transpired and I'm going to, I guess, still wait for the housing authority information to come back to us, so.
Okay. All right, any other comments, questions? Go ahead, Councilor Kush.
I just want to say, sitting on the Appointments Committee, we have a whole lot of people that are very interested in helping town and I know later on the agenda, we'll be talking about inventorying the people who are no longer with us and maybe this would give an opportunity to other people to look into the future. And with the big developments coming, it might be a sounding board for the developers to be able to talk about some of the housing options in the developments that they're making.
Councilor Sims, go ahead.
Yeah, I agree with that sentiment and I, you know, I think affordable housing, it means a lot more. I think people just instantly think, oh, so you mean 100% publicly subsidized housing? No, that is not what we are talking about here. We are talking about houses that are more affordable than the very limited supply of housing that we currently have available in this town. And I think it's a great idea to have this committee. I think it's a great idea for them to work with Gorham Economic Development Corporation because you cannot have more businesses unless you have more people. And I think it, when we talk about affordability, we got to talk about housing costs and transportation costs because if people have to keep driving further to afford a house, their transportation costs are going up. So that's a big part of it as well. So I, I'm supportive of this and I'm, I'm looking forward to getting some folks involved and helping us solve these challenges.
Councilor Willis, go ahead.
Yeah, at my very first council meeting, we talked about affordable housing and since, since that meeting, I've given it a lot of thought. I've, I've done some research, I've talked to a number of people. I'm certainly familiar with what Yarmouth has done and some other communities and a lot of surrounding communities frankly have done it better than, than we have. I mean, we haven't done anything so far. So I support this as a next step towards having some people that are not waking up every day, but waking up a lot of days thinking about how do we create affordable housing options in our town. So I'll support this moving forward.
Councilor Lavoy, go ahead.
Yep. So my thing is, how do you define affordable housing, right? I still don't know what the definition is there. Councilor Sims, I just heard your definition, but affordable to who? What's the dollar amount, right? I think this is evolving, we're all kind of dealing with this, especially in Southern Maine. Do we need a committee to solve these problems that we don't have that? Well, we have here in town. I just see it as redundant. You, I feel like town staff are informed and can guide us as we make decisions regarding affordable housing. I don't feel like we need a committee for this, so, not yet, at least.
So I would, I would, when looking at this, I was just thinking about, I see that Yarmouth has like a charter and everything, or their bylaws, but I think that we need to set that in place before we form a committee. I would rather do that first and then if, if that's okay, I don't know if it's the Appointments Committee or what, or staff. And then that gives clear direction to this committee because I don't want any expectations set also. I understand in Yarmouth, it says meet periodically and, you know, it gives them good guidelines, but I don't want any expectations that this committee does a lot of work, makes a recommendation and then it, you know, it automatically gets adopted by the town council or because they're a committee and we've tasked them with looking at things that is automatically, you know, we came up with this idea and then, so I want to work on that a little bit, just like the wording and maybe, I don't know if town staff wants to put that together. And then I just recently just got thinking about committees because I know Councilor Siegel likes committees and I like having the community involvement and feedback because it's less stuff that we have to think about and we get more information from the public. But my concern at this point is, and I asked the town manager about this, about town staff, if at any point, because we do require a staff member to go to each one of these committees, if we have too many staff members going to too many committees or if we're in a good place. So I guess at some point, I would hope the town manager would say, okay, hold on, because town staff has to do their regular work during the day as well. So just all these committees, I guess, the expectation there, I'd like to manage that a little bit, so if you want to tie in.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Our staff are great, they can, they can tackle any challenge in front of them, including any, any and all committees. That being said, I think, and it's been touched on, if you form this committee, the most critical component, in my opinion, is it needs to be in collaboration or contact with the council because you don't want a committee to go out and focus on 100 different items, bring them back to the council and the council just says no for a variety of reasons. Somehow the council needs to be involved throughout that process because you, otherwise you're wasting the committee's time. The council's not as informed on, on what they're looking at, so, so we could definitely vet that. I think tonight was to see if you wanted it and then we could dive into the details. If you want, similar to Yarmouth, if you do pass it tonight, we could bring back that charter or bylaws, guidelines. Committees like the Cemetery Committee the council created, I'm not as worried about. This is a much more complicated issue, so definitely would have that in place.
Comments? Councilor Willis, go ahead.
Are we looking at moving this to a subcommittee of the council to then form the committee? Is that where we're kind of going? Is that your thought, Chair?
Well, I mean, I guess that's, well, my recommendation was just that we get the bylaws and we know what the committee's doing first. I mean, I'm not opposed to the committee, I just need to know what they're doing, I guess, specifically for Gorham, not...
Yeah. So I guess to answer part of Councilor Lavoy's question, too, I think affordable housing has many definitions depending on how you're looking at, you know, AMI and, and what sort of piece you're trying to hit. And so I do think this is pretty broad as it currently exists. I would like to see us target workforce housing, you know, so that people can work at the schools, they can work for our town and work and live in Gorham. So I'd love to find a way to give a little bit more direction to what we're asking this committee to do, but I do think there's a power, affordable housing is only going to get tackled if there are people thinking about affordable housing in our community and I'm not sure that's happening right now. And so I do think that moving that forward in a way would make sense.
Okay, should we move this to the Personnel Committee to discuss?
Thank you, Madam Chair. I think you have two options, or you have multiple options, but the two easiest would be send it to Appointments Committee to look at, or you could instruct staff to, based on what you've spoken about tonight, bring something back at your next meeting or a future meeting. I think the Appointments Committee could probably dive deeper into it, but that's 100% up to the council.
Send it to a committee.
Send it to a committee?
Send it to Appointments Committee, then.
Okay. All right, all right, Councilor Sims?
We're, we're happy to take it, right? I'm just, I'm looking at you two.
Oh, I'm sorry.
No, I'm just making sure that, yeah, we're, I guess, yeah.
A motion by Councilor Sims to send it to Appointments Committee?
Yeah.
Is there a second?
I'll second.
Second by Councilor Lavoy. All those in favor of the amendment? Seven yeas?
Just further discussion?
Yeah, further discussion and regarding the guidelines and definitions and whatever else that is.
Yada, yada, yada.
Madam, sorry, I just want to clarify that I misspoke and I said we were talking about the Cemetery Commission coming up, but that's because I read the minutes from the last meeting that we had, so it's not coming up, but I haven't totally lost my hour.
I thought, it was a very grim, I wasn't sure what you were... I wasn't going to say anything.
I can take it.
All right, all those in favor and the item as amended? Seven yeas?
Item 2025-3-10, action to consider setting a council workshop for the discussion of smart growth, Councilor Sims sponsoring. Proposed Order 2529, order that the town council set May 20th, 2025, as a workshop to discuss smart growth concepts.
Is there a motion?
Point of, point of clarity, Madam Chair. Isn't that in the middle of budget season? And that date?
Is that date the budget meeting with the school?
It's the week after.
It's the week after, okay.
Okay, so...
So, all right, you made a motion, is there a second?
A second.
Yep. All right.
Thanks, I'm open to other dates that people would prefer. I will say, it is extremely pertinent to our budget challenges. Smart growth is something we need to be looking at much more closely because we are going to keep struggling with the town budget every year until we started, started raising more development that's generating more property tax revenue than it's costing us. So I would be open to another date if people...
So I would be open to another date if people want that, but I'd like us to, there's experts other than myself, I can keep babbling on about it, but I'd rather have experts tell us all, I have much to learn as well, so I look forward to doing it at some point.
Thank you. Any other comments? Go ahead.
Madam Chair, I don't mind having a workshop on smart growth, but April, May, and June are budget season, and so I'm not looking to have more workshops upon other committee obligations during that time, so that I can focus solely on the budget.
Yeah, I'm happy to move it to another date.
To June? Do you mind moving it to June, or?
June work, later June, or would you rather?
Well, it'll be after budget season, yeah, because our June workshop will be in the third week, right?
Sure. So, I mean, we could go to August, or whatever, I don't care, September.
August would be better.
Yeah?
Yeah.
August works for me.
All right. All right, so is there a motion to change it to August workshop date? All right, second by Counselor Gagnon. Motion by Counselor Sims, I don't know if you noticed that. All right, all those in favor are changing it to August? Seven yays, all right, and voting on the item as amended. All those in favor? Seven yays.
Item 2025-3-11, action to consider amending the Land Use and Development Code with regards to traffic generation requirements for accessory dwelling units, Counselor Phillips sponsored. Proposed order 25-30, order that the town council forward to the Ordinance Committee for review and recommendation, reducing and/or eliminating traffic generation requirements for accessory dwelling units on private ways.
Is there a motion?
So moved.
All right, is there a second?
Second.
Second by Counselor Willis. So this was brought up in several conversations to me over the last year or so, and when I mentioned it to the town manager, he said it was also staff, you know, kind of, it's an issue that comes up with staff as well. And so basically, it involves when people are putting in accessory dwelling units in private ways, have a maximum amount, those are, we don't allow those to be created, and it creates a problem for the other people and the number of people that are allowed to access the private ways. So I explained that poorly, because I'm tired, but, so, but if you have anything to add, if, you know, if you need any clarification, maybe tomorrow, the town manager can add something. Anything to add? Okay. So if that made any sense? All right, any questions, comments? Counselor Siegel, go ahead.
I would like to see if the council would entertain an amendment. Typically, when ordinance gets, gets things like this, that become, that are this specific and this laser-focused, when we start looking at the ordinance, there sometimes appears other things that we go, oh, we should also just shift that, like that's, you know, a small thing that we can also tackle. And so I want to see if the council's open to an amendment to actually just remove the words "traffic generation," to say, action to consider amending the Land Use and Development Code with regards to requirements for accessory dwelling units, so that just, we would look at this exact thing that you're discussing, but if in that process, we notice other small changes, we'd want to just also kind of bring those in there, so we don't have, for instance, what happened when we looked at the sprinkler ordinance, it was so laser-focused, we had to do another motion and delay everything kind of another month, just to fix a number of things we noticed in there.
I'm in favor of specific things, that's all I'm going to say. I just, this was the issue, I think when I asked staff to write it up, you know, to write it up, it was to address that one issue, and I wasn't aware of any other issues on private ways with accessory dwelling units, but.
Thank you, Madam Chair. I am sure there are plenty of issues in the Land Use and Development Code. To your point, we know what this issue is, there may be other unrelated issues, it's entirely up to the council how, we want this corrected, and we want this to move through the system and have council look at it, but it's entirely up to the council if you want to broaden the scope of that.
I take Counselor Siegel's point, but I, let's get this one done. I'm sure we'll uncover other things, and we'll bring them up at the next council meeting.
All right.
Okay, I rescind my non-motion.
All right, any other discussion? All right, all those in favor? Seven yays.
Item 2024-5-9, action to consider bundling permit fees in a manner that is more consistent with other municipalities and/or easier for permit applications and provide recommendations to the town council, Finance Committee sponsored. Proposed order 25-31, order that the town council accept the Finance Committee's recommendation that online permitting software be used to bundle permit applications in a projected rollout in 2025.
Is there a motion?
So moved.
Is there a second?
Second.
Second by Counselor Willis.
Sure, and town manager, please correct me if I missed something or fill in the gaps. We were asked to look at this to see if we could streamline the permitting process in ways we can, you know, help the whole process, and we had a long discussion about it, and we were, we basically discussed how you can't really bundle them, because electrical's different than plumbing, and structural, and so forth. Out of that conversation, we were informed that the town's about to roll out a new online permitting process platform, and that was going to solve a lot of the concerns and issues and streamline the process. So as it reads, I think the online software, which is going to be rolled out this year, should be, right?
Fingers crossed.
Yeah, so we left it at that.
Any other?
Thank you, Madam Chair, and I think what was important is, we wanted to get a recommendation and course action back to the council, but also understanding if opportunities exist in, you know, as seen in other municipalities, or from the private sector, or just the average citizen, to improve the process, we want to know about it, and we'll investigate it, and if we can do it, we'll do it.
Any other comments, questions?
I would just say, one of the challenges was some of those specific permits state gets the money.
Oh, yeah.
I think that was a big piece of it, that where the money's going.
Yeah.
All right, all those in favor? Seven yays.
Item 2025-3-12, action to consider adopting town council goals for 2025, Administrator sponsored. Proposed order 25-32, order that the town council adopts goals as outlined from its January 2025 goal sending workshop for the 2025 year as follows. Top priority goals, these are five interconnected goals, not in any particular order. Fill the industrial park, reconsider allowable uses, focus on filling the park in a sensible way. Preserve the rural character and historical aspects of Gorham, rural character and historical districts need to be defined. Incentive farmlands and open space, allow for the increased commercial activity in the village, allow for an increased housing density in the village. Encourage long-term economic development and fiscal sustainability. Change the zoning to encourage commercial development. Plan for fiscal sustainability based on project growth and in ways what stabilizes taxes over the long run. Improve infrastructure to support controlled growth. Provide perimeters for developers, access federal and state grants. Preserve and enhance the quality of life, develop and promote trails and other outdoor recreational activities. Improve and promote the things that already make us unique and that we do well, excuse me, develop and promote reasons to live, work, and play in Gorham.
Is there a motion?
So moved.
Second by Counselor Gagnon. I just want to thank everybody for that workshop, I thought we had a really good conversation at that. Thanks to the town manager and to Craig Freshley, who was our facilitator at that meeting. I think this will help us kind of look back to when we're proposing items and, you know, moving along and moving things forward, so any other discussion, comments? Go ahead, Counselor Gagnon.
Access federal and state grants might be a wish at this point now, right? Just a pun, I also like to note the support controlled growth, where we've approved yet another 900 unit subdivision, so.
Control. Thank you. All right, all those in favor? Seven yays. Motion to adjourn.
Second.
Oh, jeez, all right. All those in favor?